Perfect.
Okay, um. Good evening and welcome to the July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I'm going to open by taking a roll call of the board members that are present this evening. As I come across your names, please raise your hand and signify by saying yes or hello. My name is Lee Levy. I am the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. We have Andy Conroy. Kathy Olson.
Here.
Danielle Sancheck.
Here.
Keith Lyon. Keith, unmute, unmute yourself.
Good idea. Thank you. Hello?
Hello, Andy. Steve Ferguson.
Here. Good evening.
Good evening. And what else do we have this evening? Guess that's it. That's all our guests and presenters. We're all present. Let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to nine P M., we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will state his or her name for the record and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative has spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application called. New applications will not normally be heard after nine P M. As the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting. But should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is a recorded video conference and will become a matter of permanent public record. For public comment period, all commentators must state their name and address and comments must be on topic. Anyone using threatening hateful or sexual sexually explicit language will be cut off and removed from the meeting and will not be allowed to rejoin. The first case to be heard this evening is application two four dash zero seven one eight dash zero one. Danielle, if you would read the application, please.
Mr. Chairman, before Vice Chair Sancheck reads the application, may I ask a question? And it may then avoid having Vice Chair Sancheck to go through the reading of the application. Would you indulge me for just a minute?
I certainly will.
Thank you. Some information has come to our attention late this afternoon through Ms. Maldonado and a member of the club that calls into question perhaps some of the accuracy of some of the documents that were submitted. So if it's the commission's pleasure, we would ask that you open the hearing on this matter, but continue it immediately so that it would be heard in August, so that we have the opportunity to review the plans to make sure that everything is accurate, rather than have you go through a hearing tonight with plans that may not be. We think that's a prudent course of action and I apologize for having this scheduled, but it did come to our attention late this afternoon. And I think it would be prudent for us and for you to have to have accurate information before you. And if that means we have to revise plans, we will do so immediately.
I did read that letter, letter from the board member, the club member, and it does, it does concern me. And I think that your suggestion is a very prudent one. And I think it's one that I will recommend that the board take that direction. For those board members who read the letter, it calls into question the hard surface site coverage at the club. And I would like to give the applicant the opportunity to review their application and the site plan. So I would recommend, and I'll ask for a vote, that the board open this item and keep it open through to next month to give the club the opportunity to either correct information from either party. So would all the board members raise your hand and say aye to this suggestion?
Aye.
Think we've got a unanimous vote there?
No, you don't.
No, Andy, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand raised.
I didn't raise it. That's right. I'm cool with bringing it to August and opening it tonight, but I need to know the governing structure of the applicant and some information provided us by the time we get to the next meeting and how they approve this type of a project. That would be really helpful.
We'd be happy to do that, Mr. Conroy. We'll provide you with some information on how this proposal was presented to club members and members of the Board of Directors will be there on tonight and they'll be on next month as well.
Yeah. Take, take a look at their bylaws. Just make sure we're copacetic.
Sure. And I apologize to Vice Chair Sancheck for kind of stealing your thunder, but I think it's a prudent course of action. I appreciate the, the action that you took tonight.
You could add me to the yes list.
Very good. That means that our vote is unanimous to open this hearing and delay the presentation until our August meeting. So thank you, Miss Sachi. We look forward to seeing you in August.
And since the hearing is opened and continued, we don't need to renotice neighbors, but the sign that is on the premises will remain up until the hearing next month.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy.
Okay, we will move on to item two four dash zero seven one eight dash zero two, Estate of Sally Reynolds. Danielle?
Sure. Two four dash zero one zero seven one eight dash zero two, Estate of Sally Reynolds. Special exception per section eight point three point three point eight point two point B to unmerge lots joined under the same ownership per section one point two, one point three point A point two in Zone C D dash one M. The property is located at eighty-one Witch Lane, which was merged with seventy-nine Witch Lane, District Six, Block Thirty-two, Lot Thirty-one. Request: The applicant seeks to separate two adjoining lots, eighty-one and seventy-nine Witch Lane. Background: The two lots were subdivided in nineteen sixty-two. Seventy-nine Witch Lane has an existing single-family dwelling built in nineteen thirty-nine. Eighty-one Witch Lane is a rear lot that was never developed. Analysis and findings: These two lots are merged by the zoning resolution because they are under the same ownership and eighty-one is now a non-conforming since it is a rear lot. The new zoning regulations effective February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four do not allow for rear lots. All existing rear lots are rendered non-conforming per the adoption of the new regulations. If the rear lot were under the same, were under separate ownership, a zoning permit could be obtained for a new single-family residence as an over-the-counter permit, provided that the proposal met all other C D dash one M zone standards.
Very good. Will the representative for this item, please come forward and identify yourself?
Hi, yes. Amy Zapatakas from Ruchi Law Group on behalf of the applicant, David Reynolds, the executor of the estate of Sally Reynolds. Let's see, can I do the share screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, oops. All right. So can you see the tax assessors map?
No.
No? Like a pointer. Paused. Why am I paused? I'm not quite sure why. It's, it's, you're just seeing a like the, the pointer thing, right? Not the, the map?
Yeah, just the pointer.
I, I can bring it up for you. It'll just take me a minute, but I'll bring it up.
Oh, here we go. Wait, I think I got it.
Okay.
There we go. Now, can you see the tax assessors map?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. So just to orient us, seventy-nine is the front lot, eighty-one is the rear lot, right in the center of the, the screen here. As was stated at the beginning, we're requesting a special exception to unmerge seventy-nine and eighty-one Witch Lane. Because this is a special exception application, this is not a variance application, we are not required to show a hardship. Eighty-one and seventy-nine Witch Lane are shown, as you can see on the tax assessors' maps, as separate lots, and the owners have been paying two separate tax bills on the lots. As was stated at the beginning, the lots were subdivided in nineteen sixty-two and map six zero seven seven was reported at that time. Can, I think you can see the map six zero seven seven?
Yes.
Okay. You can see that there is a front lot and a rear lot and an accessway, the same as what's shown on the tax assessors' records. In nineteen sixty-three, Mr. Reynolds, not my current client, his father and his mother, Sally Reynolds, purchased both of the lots. And as was stated before, the front lot seventy-nine was already developed with the house. And I should also note that Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds lived in Hurowayton until they're, both of their respective deaths. In nineteen ninety-eight, the Reynolds put an easement on seventy-nine Witch Lane, so a sewer lateral could run to eighty-one Witch Lane and map eleven eight five eight was recorded. You should be able to see eleven eight five eight at this time. You can see the sewer lateral easement is on the other side of the property from the accessway. So after Ms. Reynolds died, Mr. Reynolds died in two thousand and thirteen and Ms. Reynolds died in November of two thousand and twenty-three. So after her death and on the, once the estate was, was settled, my client, Mr. Reynolds, as executor, prepared to list the two lots for sale. And he, at that time, did double-check with the zoning department to confirm that, in fact, there were two lots despite the fact that both were owned by his parents. And the zoning office at that time confirmed that, yes, there were two lots and they could be sold separately and developed separately. As you all know, in February of two thousand and twenty-four, the Norwalk zoning regulations were amended. And under the new regulation, this flag lot, which is Lot eighty-one, became non-conforming. So at that time, we actually did confirm, again, with the zoning staff that we could sell these two lots separately because, as stated, they have been separate since nineteen sixty-two. And we're told we could. And then there was some further back and forth and at that point, the zoning staff determined that because of the operation of merger in in section one, one twenty-one, three A two, the lots had been merged because they were owned by the same owners. So, um, so I just want to be clear as to what's happening here. The, the applicant, which is the executor, is not seeking a variance to create a new non-conforming lot. We are not asking, at this point, we're not putting forward any development proposals for the lot. When a development proposal and if a development proposal comes forward, that will require review to make sure there's no adverse impact on the neighbors. If a curb cut is requested, that will have to be reviewed by D P W. It will go through all of the required steps before development. All that we're asking for at this time is confirmation that the lots can be sold separately and that we can be, and we're asking, requesting a special exception to unmerge these two lots. Under the standards of special, special exception, you know, there is a requirement to review that there's no adverse impact on the neighbors in the neighborhood. And I would assert that any neighbor who at any point looked at this lot would see the existing tax map, which shows that there are two lots in this location. So it should really come as no surprise to anyone in the neighborhood that there are two lots in this location. And therefore, no adverse impact because there wasn't necessarily any discussion in connection with this lot. Oh, you know, the regulations should be changed so that this lot would be merged. You know, had the, you know, had the Reynolds realized that this zone change was imminent, they would have, prior to the zone change, split the lot into two. But of course, at the time that this was all going on, Ms. Reynolds was, was quite ill. So again, this, this special exception process exists within the Norwalk zoning regulations. It exists for precisely this purpose to allow a special exception to be issued when you have this sort of unexpected merger situation. So we would request that the board grant this application. I don't know if there are any specific questions that I can answer for anyone at this time.
What's the width of that accessway?
Let's see, it is, I think we're going to need to zoom in here quite a bit. I have it in paper form if I need it. It is a twenty, it's a fifteen-foot accessway. And again,
I take it that the sewer lateral that was shown, the easement, the lateral has never been installed?
You know, we probably need to do some engineering work to confirm that there, my client seems to remember that it was installed. I wasn't able to find any specific paperwork in the town about that. So again, if and when that lots develop, there'll need to probably be some engineering work to do some, some ground penetration, I believe, based on my client's memory. But again, this was his parents' house. It was installed.
Okay, because if it wasn't, was not installed, there's going to be a considerable amount of site work and site damage to the front lot. Would you agree?
Potentially, you know, it depends on, on how the work is done. But again, that's sort of, I, I, one of the reasons why I think that the lateral probably was installed is I find it curious that they would have, you know, put this utility easement in place in nineteen ninety-eight for, unless there was actually the, the lateral being installed at that time.
Well, I, I think it would have been good to come with, come to us with that information. You know, it might make a part of a better argument for the approval of this property subdivision.
All right. Well, yeah. And again, we're not asking for an approval of a subdivision. It's a, it's a special exception to unmerge.
Well, I, I understand that, but it might have given you more, more ground to stand on. Do we have any other questions from other board members?
Just a note that we run into this.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just going to say we have a note, to note that we run into this unmerging thing quite a bit. There is a state statute and local ordinances that require for tax reasons that the lots be merged.
And I think it's going to become more problematic with these rear or flag lots as they come up. People want to try to develop them. So I think we need to pay attention to that.
Yeah, I would ask Tammy to speak to why they were prohibited in the new zoning regulations.
That's an excellent question that I don't have a definitive answer to. You know, that, what, what it points to, what, what the prohibition results from, that an infringement is required. And I think that has to do with the Form Base Code that was strived for here, but yeah, we're finding that challenging for the single families. I don't think we are proposing some revisions to the commission to address some of the challenges with the single-family zones, but honestly, I don't think rear lot is going to be one of those. So we'll have, you know, the ones that already are out there and aren't developed, if they're under separate, if they're, if they're under their own ownership, separate ownership, then they can move forward. Otherwise, we'll have to have more come in front of, kind of the board.
So it wasn't like a move to try to reduce density in these kinds of places?
No, our goal, our goal, in fact, was the opposite, to increase density.
I'm sorry, if I can circle back to the question about the sewer lateral. I did just want to say, I, I, I forgot in my primary application, there was an affidavit filed on the land records at the time of Mr. Reynolds' death in two thousand and thirteen. And that affidavit states that in nineteen ninety-eight, Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds filed a utility easement permitting a sewer line to run from the street to parcel B and a sewer lateral from the existing line was installed to the rear of the property, all with the approval of Mr. Peter Goldner of the Norwalk Department of Public Works. So I think that helps in the analysis of whether or not the sewer line was actually run.
Okay. Thank you for that piece of information.
Amy, I have a question. Just given that the the dates of death of the two owners are separated by quite a bit, are the lots indeed in the exact same legal names?
Yeah, they're both in the estate of Sally Reynolds currently. They were, they, the lots were held jointly by Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds and are now, and joint with right of survivorship. And now, upon Ms. Reynolds' death, they're in the estate of Sally Reynolds.
And is that, and, and at what point did, I'm, I'm reading from Tammy's note, the two lots are merged by zoning regulation because they're under the same ownership. Have they always been under the same ownership in as much as it was Mr. and Mrs. to begin with, and now it's the estate?
Yes, they have always been under the same ownership. The issue was that lot, the rear lot eighty-one was not a non-conforming lot. So this regulation of this merger would not have occurred until the eighty-one Witch Lane became a non-conforming lot. So basically, they were merged as of February two thousand and twenty-four.
Oh, okay, now, yeah.
So again, that's sort of the, the issue here is that Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds had no reason to worry about holding the lots into separate ownership until February of two thousand and twenty-four.
Any other questions from board members?
So it's the new zoning regulation that doesn't allow rear lots that raises the issue of them being under the same ownership or?
Correct, which is why I, which is why I would believe that the zoning staff initially told my client and his real estate broker, there was no issue with, you know, listing the two houses, you know, together or separately. They're just two lots. I apologize. I misspoke. Two lots.
Yeah, Keith, until the, the new reg, the old reg specifically allowed it.
Okay. So had they, had they started down this road on February the eighteenth, they would have been okay?
If we had, if, if my client had found a buyer or the house had been sold before his mother's death, then we would not be here.
Thank you.
Hey, other questions from board members? Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this application?
We do. We also have, so we have one, you know, dialed or not, we have one dialed in. So if you want to speak after Mr. Sax, who raised his hand first, you'll need to press star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute.
Good evening. I believe I'm on the other side of this discussion, so I don't think that's the right, appropriate time for me to speak. I would not before this.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. Yeah. So, sorry, anybody who wants to speak for, raise your hand. There's no raised hands.
Very good. We'll move on to Mr. Sax then, who wishes to speak in opposition to this application.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Chairman Levy, Steam Z B A commissioners, thank you for listening. I was hoping that we would see at least one picture of a glacier, but maybe that will be at the, the next, the next meeting. I, I, you know,
Jordan?
Yes.
Tell us where you live.
Oh, yes. Jordan Sax, one thirty-eight Highland Avenue. That would be around the corner from the subject property in Norwalk.
Thank you.
And if you have, give me just a small bit of latitude. I have one quick question comment that I want to add to the record just based on my previous communication with zoning inspector Maldrono. It's connected to the application review. I'm a big supporter of the new posted sign of public hearing requirement for variances. I, I welcome this and it's a great improvement. It's increasing transparency. It's amplifying awareness of the upcoming applications that are under review by the Z B A. However, I was surprised to learn that the special permit requests, which I would argue are even greater significance, given the special nature, do not require posted public notice or mailed notice. So I view this as a misalignment. I would challenge the Z B A to do everything in its power to bring the notification process for variances and special requests to parity as soon as possible. So it's just something that I noticed and wanted to flag on to the commission. Additionally, the new zoning codes do not contain any explicit standards for granting a special exemption. Like there always have been for granting a variance in all zoning codes. It's very unclear to me, you know, what the standards need to be met to meet the hurdle for a special exemption. It seems to me that, you know, lawyers have figured out that after submitting a variance request to Z B A without a hardship, it's a losing argument. So they've concocted this workaround to circumvent the variance request by submitting special exemptions that has a more ambiguous burden of proof versus precedent set by historical Z B A grants. And you know, what's happening here tonight, we're precisely what the zoning code expected and required to happen. Granting an exception to unmerge the now merged one lot would essentially void the zoning amendment and erase its intended benefits. So because anyone could apply to Z B A to be granted a special exception, it's simply because they didn't want their two lots to be merged by effect of the new zoning law. So, you know, just to recap my, my point, there's zero people in support of this. I'm at least one that's against it. I know of a few other members in the community, whether they wrote in or not, I'm not sure. But I've also expressed, you know, grave concern for this unmerging that is not, you know, under the purview of the current zoning laws. So what we have here is a non-resident looking to circumvent the zoning laws for financial gain with no public benefit juxtaposed to what the neighbors want and not what's best for the community and what is, you know, not legal under the current zoning law. So in my opinion, this is an ordinary cash grab request, not a special request. I think most of us on the Zoom are old enough to have seen the iconic movie Back to the Future starring Michael J. Fox, Christopher Lloyd, travel back into time, the bygone era, and as much as fun as it would be to have the ability to turn back, you know, the hands of father time to when you could have a rear flag lot. We all know the Z B A doesn't possess time travel capabilities. And as much fun as it would be to simply go back in time, it's not feasible and it's not in the best interest of the community to do so. If this application is approved, it could set a very dangerous precedent of applicants pivoting away from Uh, if this application is approved, it could set a very dangerous precedent of applicants pivoting away from requesting variances they know won't get approved. And apply for special exceptions. With limited public notifications, you can dig up an old tax map. Fire up a time machine and say, let's just forget about the current zoning laws and go back to the good old days, you know? And I think that's wrong. My final, you know, question to the, the ZB A is. What's so specially unique about Counselor's Client that would justify deviating from the zoning laws to allow this, you know? Financial windfall to further contribute to a density issue. Uh, that's already a massive problem specifically to the adjacent property where there's been a massive development. You know, the gravity of this precedent setting issue requires the ZB A to adhere to the strict letter of the zoning law. And take into consideration the public's interests versus one non-residence financial gain. You know, lastly, if anyone can get a special exception to unmerge these two lots that the zoning code specifically decided. Needed to be merged to eliminate the possibility of more non-conforming development than the zoning amendment would never be applicable. Because everyone thinks they're special. So I know this may be putting the cart before the horse, but we all know where this goes next, which is. Two new large homes on small size lots. And I took some pictures. I think we, it may not be relevant to this discussion because it hasn't happened. So it's. Probably would come before you if it did later in time, but there's some really. Large safety concerns, curb cut concerns, um. Tree concerns. Uh, when you look at, there's a, I don't know if this came before the, the board, but there's a massive driveway expansion literally right next to it. I submitted um. Four photos to Tammy. If you would like to see them, I'm happy to share them. If, if it's not relevant, we can, we can move on, but um. You know, there's. There's a lot of concerns that this opens up Pandora's box, in my opinion.
Mr. Sax, thank you for your, your comment. Um. I know that we will take them under consideration when we do our deliberations on this item. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? In opposition of this application?
So just a reminder to the caller, if you want to speak, you have to press star nine to raise your hand. On your phone. No raised hands. We did have one, we had Mr. Sax's letter, opposition letter, and then we had one other opposition letter.
Okay, I'm sure I have it, but uh. Uh, Danielle, could you read that letter if you have it into the record?
It's after Jordan's letter, right? Or is it before? Uh, Tammy.
I don't know.
Oh, I see it. It's in the front. Okay. Dear Ms. Maldonado, I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing to express my concern and strong opposition to the special exemption requests on behalf of Sally Reynolds estate pending before the zoning board of appeals. Please enter this correspondence into the record of this proceeding and provide a copy to each member of the ZB A. That will decide the matter. As neighbors. This is a very concerning special exemption request, and if approved, would have several significant negative impacts on our community. As a parent with young children who play close to these roads, I find it very concerning that this is even being considered to further disrupt an already densely constructed area. Especially purely for financial gain. When otherwise falsely expressed that it was not their intention to do so. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Sincerely, Jennifer Koloski. At twenty-two Range Road.
Yes, thank you much. Um. Hearing nothing else. Um. I can. Close this item. And we can move on to uh. Uh, discuss this. Uh, application.
May I just respond to a few of the points that were raised?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I realize I, I should have, I'm, it's a little, I forget with the, the zoom, I should have introduced that um, my client, uh, David Reynolds is on the call. Um, you know, as I stated, his parents lived in Rowayton. Since nineteen sixty-three, um, Mr. Reynolds lived in Rowayton for eighteen years, so. Um, just so that he's not an unfamiliar face to the community, I would say. Um, I, I really, I, I just want to. Uh, respond in particular to this idea that. We're somehow circumventing the regulations. Um, there's no circumventing or avoiding a variance, um, as the. Board well knows, we would not be able to. File a variance to create a lot which would not otherwise uh, be allowed. Um, this is a, the, the process for a special exception is within the same. Section of the code that discusses merger and it explicitly says that the zoning board of appeals may by special exception. Unmerge lots that were merged by virtue of this section. So this is very much contemplated by your regulations and is not something. Sort of out of, out of the ordinary um, in this case. And I did also just want to, if you'll indulge me, um, just share one other item. Um. So that you can see, um, I've zoomed out a bit on the tax map. The green arrow is um, eighty-one which lane. The blue arrow is where um, Mr. Sax's property is. So it's a, a significant distance from this lot. Um, again, I'm, I, I think that. This. The scenario we have in front of us is basically what the special exception in this regulation was designed for. Um, this is an inadvertent situation that was certainly unexpected by my client who was in the process of. Marketing the, his parents' home for sale. We've not in any way denied that the point is so that this could be sold. It is standard um, for an estate to. Uh, sell that, the property so that the proceeds can be divided between Mr. And Mrs. Reynolds, many children. Um, certainly not, we're certainly not looking for a windfall just to be able to, to close out this estate.
Could, Amy, could you just go back to that map? I've been torturing myself trying to uh, figure this out on Google Maps and your map was much easier.
Oh, sure. Sorry. Didn't mean to take it off so quickly.
I know.
So um, the green arrow. Is um, eighty-one which lane, the rear lot. And um, Mr. Sax's property at um, one. Thirty-eight Highland is where the blue arrow is located.
Seventy-nine is immediately in front of it.
And seventy-nine, yes, seventy-nine is the other lot in the ownership of um. Of the Reynolds estate in front of the lot with the green arrow, correct?
And seventy-five and seventy-seven are. Next door and similarly, there's a, a rear lot?
Correct, and as well as. Uh, ninety-one on the other side is also a flag lot. So there's, there are basically. Three flag lots in this area.
Yep.
So I would note that Mr. Sax has raised his hand, but the opportunity for a public comment has passed now. The attorney gets the, or the applicant gets the final rebuttal.
Yeah, I should note. So that Mr. Sax knows it, that we did receive copies of his letters. And we also got copies of his photos.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
And they're part of the record. Anything further in this matter? Hearing uh. Nothing else from the board or the applicant. I will now officially close it for discussion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Lee, you got to pick five.
Uh, yes. Um. Kathy, I'm going to ask you to. Just be a. A bystander, but do pay attention to this.
Certainly.
Because I have a feeling that. Um. Items like this are going to come around again.
I think so.
I. Can guarantee it. Uh, on the number of. Of real lots that we have. Uh. Uh, divided and seen come before us. So. Um. It, this is, this is certainly uh, an interesting item from. Numerous points of view. I think if. The application. Had been made prior to. The uh, enactment of the new zoning regulations. Uh. This would hardly be a discussion. But um.
There wouldn't have needed an application, right?
That's exactly right. We would never would have seen this. Um. So I mean, this, this. Opens, potentially opens a. Uh, an interesting Pandora's box for us. Uh. This is the first and it may not be the last. Uh. Rear lot to come before us and. Certainly, I understand that this rear lot was created, uh. You know. Uh, many decades ago. And it was intended for. Residential construction. They did. Obviously put the sewer lateral in uh, in anticipation. Uh, I, I questioned it only because I. Can recognize the amount of. Site damage that we would be done to. Number seventy-nine if they needed to excavate for the lateral. Uh, the yard would certainly be. Uh, heavily disturbed. And um, so I'd just like to find out how. Uh, the board feels about this application.
I'm okay with it.
So.
Well.
I mean, I'll acknowledge that which lane is a toughie, right? Like driveway after driveway after driveway. Um, and it's narrow and. Tough, lots of blind spots. People go pretty fast. Um. But yeah, I mean, if there was, the intent of zoning staff is not to. De-densify with, by not allowing rear lots. And there wouldn't be an application if they had just sold it. You know, six months ago.
Yeah.
And I think the fact that they paid taxes on both lots for decades and decades and decades to essentially. For the executor of this, or for the estate. The beneficiaries of this, the estate to be penalized. Um, because of a change that came into effect. In February. To me is, is. Unfair.
Uh, I. Actually agree with Keith. I mean, this is piece of property the owner's been. Paying taxes on for decades. They. Surely had a right to. Use the lot, build on the lot, sell the lot. Uh, and. You know, uh. And affect. The new regs, uh. You know, zone the lot out of legal exist, legal existence at this point. And certainly if it were the case, if this property or the general area was being. Subdivided today, it would be done. Very differently. So uh. I am convinced. This evening. And I wasn't necessarily convinced before the hearing. That uh. We should approve the uh, re-subdivision of this property. And allow the uh, estate to. Uh. Do with the property, uh, what they choose to.
I just have one question. Do we as a board think that, you know, this is a pretty big lot? They can develop a very reasonable home on it. It meets all the. Minimum lot sizes and all of that, but are we going to see other variances? Like, if once somebody develops it, are they going to have to come back to us with additional variances for this property?
I would hope not. I mean, yard setbacks. Um. I don't think so. Height. Uh. I think that if they came back to us asking for. Unreasonable variances, uh, we might look at that very differently. That's an interesting question, Tammy. If a purchaser came to us. Requesting. Yard variances or height variances. Would we make that determination based on the old zoning regs or the new zoning?
They'll be held to all the current standards except for they'll have the more restrictive setbacks of forty feet all the way around.
Okay. I. Think that's a very good answer.
About the accessway and so long as the accessway doesn't present some other kind of problem, I think that, yeah, it can be a viable lot.
Well, I think it is a viable lot.
Yeah, I agree. The, the minimum. Uh. Driveway width is eight feet and the maximum is ten.
Okay. So, yeah.
Okay, would anyone like to? Make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion and I'm just. Checking to see I get the motion right. The motion is to uh, grant a special exception. Requested.
I'll second it. All in favors Keith's motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone in opposition? This item has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, uh, moving on. To uh. Uh, administrative actions, um. I. Read the minutes of the last meeting, but I can't comment because I was not a participant. So if somebody would like to make comments. Uh, we can approve them. Or disapprove.
Yeah, I'm okay with them.
I was too.
Yep.
I'm fine.
I am okay with them.
Good. Sounds like uh, the minutes are approved unanimously. Uh, with one abstention. Uh, being Lee Levy.
Make that too. Up as well. I wasn't there last month.
Oh. I'm sorry. I didn't uh.
I was.
Thank you for chiming in. Very good, Steve.
Do I have? I have three though, right? Have, I have. Kathy, Andy, Danielle, oh, four, Lee, uh, Keith.
Yeah.
Keith.
They only need three.
Right.
Four will be good. You know, we have a weird board. The board is five. And that makes a majority on the board, three. But then there's state statutes that tell us many things that we do. I am near everything that we do requires a vote of four, which is a super. When you do administrative work. We only need three.
And three members actually constitutes a meeting. Of the ZB A. And that meeting could be. Via Zoom, in person or on a street corner. Uh. So if any of the three of us.
Other, we need to be careful. Yes.
Yes. I would, I would like to ask the board a question because before I left. For my vacation, I. Uh, picked up a copy of the new zoning regulations and actually spent a, a great deal of time. Uh, on. Couple of airplanes, reading through them, not once but twice. I'd like to know who's actually read the zoning rights. Please. Let me know. Danielle?
Yeah. I mean, it's been like targeted.
Yeah, I've only read parts of it.
Okay, um.
The same as Andy, only read parts.
It's. Having. I'll, I'll use it professionally grown up. Dealing with what are, what are called Euclidean zoning regulations. Which were formulated in Euclid, Ohio back in the nineteen twenties. Going to this format was very interesting. Initially made some very difficult. Reading. But I also found that the. Diagrams and charts were.
They were.
Very, very helpful.
Yep, I agree with that.
Agreed.
And uh.
I'll accept the rear lot. That wasn't so helpful. The title is a misleading because they're not really talking about a rear lot.
I, there, I, I tapped, I. Noted many things that I didn't agree with and went back and read and. Understood them a little bit better. Uh, I don't agree with the format perfectly. But I will agree that this is a vast improvement over. Uh, I don't agree with the format perfectly, but I will agree that this is a vast improvement over what we have.
Yes, it is.
And uh.
And I'm glad you clarified why they're called Euclidean, because I was trying to tie it back to ancient Greece.
Uh, into geometry?
Yeah.
No, Euclid, Ohio was, as far as I was able to find out, was the first municipality to enact uh, uh, you know, extensive zoning regulations. And uh, uh, noting that I grew up about uh ten miles from Euclid, Ohio, I feel kind of proud about that. So, we'll see. Uh, I have nothing else on my agenda.
He was a strong proponent of zoning regulations, and his name was Herbert Hoover. And he was on our nation's highest court, and he pushed hard that there be zoning regulations across the US. There had always been sort of piecemeal regulations, like you can't put the uh plant to slaughter horses next to the elementary school, that kind of stuff, but it didn't really go much beyond that.
Well, it uh, it took up where a lot of building codes, which were enacted in the late nineteenth century, left off. And uh, you can begin to examine what went on with major municipal fires in many cities across the US and across the world. And uh, you know, so I just think it helps solidify uh regulations for the health, safety, and well-being of the populace. Anybody have anything else?
For your help today, I appreciate it. Um, I was having trouble with that diagram, and you did explain it to me.
You're welcome.
And you'll tell folks they need to correct that little text issue.
There are quite a few little text issues.
Thanks.
I'll send you my list, Tammy.
Well, we actually, like, since you've read the regs, I can refer people to you.
Oh, boy.
Touche.
Thank you. I will make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll suck it. Yeah, all in favor?
All in favor? Until next month, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Well.
Along, everyone. Bye.